The Chair of the Maynard School Committee will be reading an opening thing pertaining to Governor Baker's Executive Order regarding remote meetings. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Branley?
Yeah.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Bethlyn Houlihan? Bethlyn Houlihan?
Yay!
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy? Yes. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Yes.
Jennifer Gaudette?
Yes.
Brian Haas?
Is he muted? I gotta find him.
Muted Brian Haas.
Hold on.
Okay. He gave the thumbs up, so he's here for those who are...
I'm here, yes.
Okay. Wayne White. And muted Wayne White.
Let me know if you watch Chronicle How It Is.
Hello?
Sorry. There we go.
Nope, muted again. And I can't see him, so he can't give me the thumbs up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Great, thank you.
All right.
And anticipated speaker or someone that we will be discussing, Jeff Ferranti.
I'm finding him.
He's waving.
He's waving. We want to hear him say it. Hello?
Oh, gosh. Why can't I find him? We've got a lot of people on tonight.
Yeah. Well, everyone wants to know how we're reopening the schools.
True.
Okay, Jeff Ferranti gave me the thumbs up. He's here. For anyone listening, just so you know, he's here. Okay. So, introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, physical location. Furthermore, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature citizens' comments. For this meeting, the Maynard School Committee is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Additionally, please let the Chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Does anyone intend to do that? You can raise your hand and... I do not see any raised hands, so I'm going to assume that no one intends to do that. Okay. Moving on. Meeting materials. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools District website under School Committee, Agendas, SC Agenda 2020-21. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Documents can be found on the district's webpage at HTTPS backslash backslash or forward slash forward slash, I'm not sure which one that is, www.maynard.k12.m-a.us/oh/maynard-public-schools/browse/142368. That will get you directly to the district's website and the page where you'll find School Committee. Meeting ground rules. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold off speaking until your name is called, and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, including colloquy, other members... Oh, colloquy with other members, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during this virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to comments4, numeral four, sc-meeting, no spaces, at maynard.k12.m-a.us. Comments need to be mailed in advance and will be received up until the Citizens' Comments Agenda item is addressed. Your email must include your first and last name and home address in order for it to be read. Emails without names and/or addresses cannot be read. Comments are limited to three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everyone who wishes to has the opportunity to be heard. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, it is suggested that you limit it to approximately 350 words. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted for public record regardless. The Chair will read only one statement from each citizen; however, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the Chair via email up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. Please be aware that the Citizens' Comments Agenda item is a devoted time for the School Committee to hear from the citizenry. As such, its structure primarily supports unidirectional public recording of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Okay. I'm now opening the meeting at, I don't know what time it is.
Lydia?
7:11. Yeah?
Sorry to interrupt. I did put it in the chat box, the information, the links, the...
Oh, okay. All right. So I won't read it next time?
No, no. It's just so people can see it, they can click.
Okay. So, we are moving on. I'm calling to order 7:11. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera? She's muted, but she's indicating that she is here. Jessica Clark?
Yes.
She's muted and indicating that she is here. Bethlyn Houlihan? And she's muted and indicating that she is here. Lydia Clancy?
I muted myself, sorry. On my computer.
Now we go to approving meeting minutes from many different meetings. We have meeting minutes from May 28, from June 18, July 15, and July 16. Does anyone have any comments or corrections for Colleen? Natasha?
Yeah, I just wanted, just for the workshop one, I know Mary wasn't there. Just a small tweak, when we were talking about the liaison roles, if we can add in a little word that previously indicated she wanted to be on the Safety Committee. The way it was worded, it was like she said it there, and she wasn't there. But I think it was that she previously had indicated that.
Correct.
Yeah.
I also have something on the workshop. Actually, I have something on a couple of them. Does anyone else have any comments or corrections?
For me, just that my name, I only have one N. So Bethlyn with one N on the end.
Okay. Colleen, for July 15, remote meeting, under School Committee members present, Mary Branley's name has an extra E in it.
Oh, thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome. For the 16th, the workshop, under CPAC liaison, it's Natasha and Jessica Clark.
Oh, I missed that. Thank you.
Yeah.
And just on that same one, that's where, at the end for the roll call vote on the workshop, my name was just spelled with an extra N.
Yeah. May 28 looks good, and June 18 looks good. So if there's no objection, I would like to approve the meeting minutes altogether.
Since I wasn't on School Committee for all of those, should I just not vote?
Yeah. Yeah, you can abstain for that. Okay.
The fact that I was absent for the workshop, does that still allow us to...
Maybe not. So maybe we'll pull that one?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I will take a motion to approve, or do I make the motion? To approve the meeting minutes for June 18, May 28, and July 15?
You can accept a motion.
I can accept a motion. I'm accepting a motion. Someone's gonna give me a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the School Committee meeting minutes as, with minor edits, as noted, for May 28, June 18, and July 15.
Second?
Okay. Roll call vote. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
What do I say, abstain?
Oh, you abstained. Yeah. Okay. Bethlyn Houlihan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy? Yes. Okay. So approved. And I will now...
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for a School Committee workshop held on July 16, 2020.
I second.
All right. Mary Branley, you weren't there, so you're abstaining?
Yes.
Okay.
And...
I'm sorry, what, Jen?
So when you just call the name, and then they can identify that they abstain at that point.
Mary Branley?
Abstain.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Bethlyn Houlihan?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Okay. That's approved. Okay, now, we move on to the Chairperson's reports. So, first off, I know that we have introduced Wayne before, and we've welcomed Wayne before, but I kind of feel like it was sort of mixed and lost in some of the other things that went on. So I just would like to officially welcome Wayne White, who is our new business manager. I know there have been several people at other meetings who have said, "Who's Wayne White?" when he is mentioned at FinCom or Board of Selectmen meetings. So I just want to welcome him again and make it known that he is our new business manager, and we are very excited to have him. Secondly, I'm very excited to introduce Jeff Ferranti, who is the Interim Director of Student Services. And Natasha has a letter from CPAC that she wishes to read.
It's just a quick, couple-sentence, Jeff. Says, "The CPAC Board welcomes Mr. Jeff Ferranti as the new Interim Director of Student Services. During the interview process, Mr. Ferranti repeatedly conveyed his commitment to robust parent participation and a strong appreciation of the home-to-school partnership. He presented himself as open, approachable, and responsive. Mr. Ferranti has strong experience collaborating with CPACs and impressively provided references from CPAC leaders to support his application. We enthusiastically look forward to supporting Jeff and his transition to Maynard."
Welcome.
Oh, he's muted, too, also.
He muted. Can we unmute him? Okay, there you go.
Thank you very much. I look forward to meeting everybody in person. But until that can happen, this is okay, too.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm looking forward to working with the CPAC, as well as the staff and the rest of the community. Thank you.
When do you officially start?
August 1 is the official, but I've attended a few meetings already.
Excellent.
And I have pages of notes, and we're ready to go. It should be a very successful year, challenging, but I believe we could do this quite well.
Great. I know there are several parents who would like to discuss E.S.Y. with you.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much. And I also just want to note, we have a new GM principal, and I don't recall if we've welcomed him personally in a meeting, but we hope to have him attend one soon so that we can introduce him and welcome him. Yes, Natasha?
I was wondering, I know that a lot of the Board hadn't heard a lot of Jeff. I don't know if it'd be possible if he's, I don't want to put him on the spot, but just to kind of, I know other admins, when they've kind of given a little bit of brief of their, where they're from, I didn't know if that would be an opportunity we might be able to hear.
Sure.
A minute about, just as he's transitioning, for those who didn't get to hear through the interview process. I think he's muted again, too.
Yeah, as is Jessica Clark. I don't know if we can make sure, Jessica, you're muted.
I think I muted myself, because there was a child in the background that everybody probably didn't want to hear.
I can't unmute myself, so.
Sorry.
If I can just jump in for procedural pieces, or I guess, Madam Chair, point of order?
Yes.
The, Colleen and I are both co-hosts on this, and because of that, we are able to allow, you feel free to mute yourselves. When someone is called upon to speak, either Colleen or I will press the unmute, at which point you have to select unmute myself, I believe is what it says.
Yeah.
So there may be a second or two delay, but that is the process that we will use, and that way, Jessica, I appreciate the same sentiment with kiddos in the background. So, it's good to be able to mute when you need to, for sure. Yeah.
Okay. Jeff, do you want to give us a little brief bio?
Sure, 350 words or less?
Yes, exactly. And I'm starting the timer now.
Okay, thank you. This is my 27th year in special education. I spent my first eight years teaching in Springfield. I had a classroom with kids, social-emotional behavior disorder. The next 18, 18, 19, I've been a special administrator. 10 years as a coordinator in a suburban district, another seven or eight in a very rural, poor district. And as far as, as far as my goals for the department, I'm trying to follow as much as I can what Dr. Johnston, who's our State Director, and his comment is pretty clear. He goes, he wants to make sure that the students receive as much in-person instruction as possible, as feasible, within the health and safety parameters in effect at each particular time. That's my goal. And to that effect, I've been working with Carol, as well as various staff and administrators, just talking about, how are we going to do that? I'm looking forward to starting the year, believe it or not. I don't know how many people are saying that. I want to get going, because I believe there's a level of flexibility and knowledge that will, that will serve us quite well. And as far as personally, I'm married to an elementary school teacher for 20, honey, how many is it? I think it's 27 or 28 years. We have two sons, both had left the nest and are back in the nest. And I'm looking forward to working in Maynard, the community, the demographics, the fact that three schools and the number of kids, it is ideal. And I hope this will be my most successful year of the 27 that I've had.
Thank you so much for that. I think you just made a lot of parents breathe a sigh of relief, actually, with your words. So, great. Thank you so much. All right. Anything else? Anybody? Members? Nope? Okay. So, going on, on the Chair's report, we did Subcommittee and Liaison Appointments. For the Budget Subcommittee, it will be Mary Branley and Natasha Rivera. For Communication Subcommittee, it will be Bethlyn and me. Curriculum and Strategic Planning Committee Subcommittee is Bethlyn and Jessica. Negotiation Subcommittee will be Natasha and Jessica. Policy Subcommittee is Mary Branley and me. And the liaisons to various other boards and groups. Board of Selectmen, I will be the liaison. FinCom, Natasha will be the liaison. Safety and Wellness, if Mary wasn't there, so we just assumed she was still going to be doing it. So, but if...
No, absolutely.
Okay. So that will be Mary. And for CPAC, Natasha and Jessica. Now, if you noted, Bethlyn is not a liaison, and so she is going to be able to back us up when needed if one of us can't attend, or, or, Mary, if you decide you want to split Safety and Wellness, she could take over one of those.
Or any special ops that come up this year.
Or any special ops, exactly.
Special projects liaison.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. And I just want everyone to know that we are diligently working on getting last year's Subcommittee meeting minutes typed and approved. This year, we're in a better position to ensure that we approve and post them in a timely manner going forward. So that is our goal, one of our goals for the Subcommittee's this year. I'd like to recap, there was a tri-board meeting on July 15. The Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee all got together, and we discussed FY20 shortfall and the Town Administrator's recommendation to accommodate that deficit, the fiscal year '21 budget projections, and the district's needs in light of reopening with the strict guidelines that will require additional funding. All three boards were in agreement that the schools would require and receive as much support as possible from the town in order to provide the standard of instruction that we all expect and hope for in this coming year. The School Committee had a workshop with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and we discussed the scope and responsibilities of each of the Subcommittee's and Liaison roles. We also discussed what is the School Committee's purview and what is the Superintendent's purview. We are dedicated to proceeding with more clarity regarding operating in our respective lanes going forward. Colleen and I attended an open meeting law training session webinar on Monday, and we learned a couple of things that the School Committee may have been doing incorrectly. So she has tweaked a couple of things in order to make sure we're following proper We are going to add two additional School Committee meetings to the summer calendar. So in addition to the August 20 meeting, we are also going to have one next week, the 27th of July at 6:00 p.m., and that will be a two-item agenda, just a brief thing for us to discuss. We need to vote on the reopening plan before it's submitted to the state, and August 6, and that will be potentially another brief meeting, because we have to submit the final plan on August 10 to the state, and so August 8 will be for review and another vote regarding that plan.
You repeat those, yeah. Can you repeat that again?
Sure.
With those two meeting dates and the times?
Yep. So, 7:27, which...
Is that Monday?
I think, yes, Monday. Yes, Monday.
Right?
At 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I was under the impression that everybody had weighed in on that.
I don't, I don't know if we, I mean, I know there were a lot of doodles that went around, but I don't, I don't think we, I don't think this, but that's good. I mean, I'm available. I just, this is the first I'm hearing, like, the definitive dates. I just want to make sure I'm noting it.
Oh, okay. All right.
There's going to be a Finance Committee, School Committee combination, so I think we'd all sort of set it aside anyway.
Right.
And we decided, because of the deadline, that we would make it just, we postponed the combination meeting and just have our School Committee meeting.
Right. So the FinCom is still meeting, I think, on the 28th, so that'll allow, I think, to attend that a little bit. Okay, great.
Yeah.
But 6:00, 6:00 p.m. on the 27th. Got it.
27th. And then August 6 at 7:00 p.m.
I possibly will be on vacation.
Okay. Again, I'm sorry, I was under the impression that people had been asked and were all set, so if we can revisit.
No, it's okay. I might be able to participate. I just, I'm not sure exactly, so, just as a heads up, just as an FYI.
Okay. All right. So, and then the 8:20 meeting that we had already planned. And just keep in mind that we also have a meeting, a joint FinCom meeting, on August 10. And I still need to connect with Ken about that, regarding what time he expects us to speak, where we're going to fall on the agenda. And I will...
I was just going to ask, on the August 20 meeting, we're going to have a workshop ahead of time, was that going to be for 5 o'clock?
We are going to have a workshop ahead of time, and I believe we're looking at 5:30. And that will be for us to go over the School Committee goals, School Committee self-evaluation, and Subcommittee goals.
Right. And that's the one that we'll be looking at, like, the strategic plan a little bit more also, right?
Yes. Yep.
So workshop around 5-ish? We can just kind of pencil in?
Yes. Yeah. I have to confirm that with Dorothy, depending on how much time she thinks we'll need. So if she thinks we're going to need two hours, it'll start around 5. If she thinks we can get away with an hour and a half, then it would start at 5:30.
I kind of remember last year that if we hadn't talked about our goals yet, it might be the full two hours, right? Because we didn't even, we didn't really get to brainstorm at all yet, right? So...
And we also have the evaluation form ahead of time, so I can send that out, and that can be done, and we don't need to do it in person. So, yeah. All right.
And we have goals this time to be able to respond to, which we didn't have last year.
Right.
That's different.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Everybody good?
Thank you.
Excellent. I want to note that the high school graduates of 2019, or, no, 2020, what year are we? 2020, are actually getting an in-person ceremony Friday at the high school. I don't have specific details, and I think that's by design, because it's, they're trying to limit participation due to distancing and other restrictions. But our thoughts are with them as they get to finally celebrate somewhat their graduation in person. And I also would like to ask everyone for their thoughts, prayers, and positive energy for one of our Fowler students, who is back in the hospital and fighting a serious disease, and, and we just want him and his family to know that our thoughts are with you. So, and that is it. It is now time for the Superintendent's Report, if I haven't put him to sleep yet.
You didn't.
Excellent.
And you were right about graduation. It is this Friday, and it hasn't been a secret. The senior class has been informed repeatedly, there's been lots of communication. You are correct that we still, some of the challenges are abiding by the state requirements for large gatherings are still limited. So there's still some issues around tickets and seats, and we're trying to work through those. It's, it is just a challenge. Unless you have a really, really small graduating class, everybody can't get a ticket. Even outside, they've limited the number, and they've separated things, but the principal and co-principals have actually worked really, really hard, and Class Advisor, to find ways to get as many people as possible involved and keep it as equitable as possible. And with all that said, it's still a challenge. And it's been tough for that group, because they have not been able to celebrate like everybody else, and as, not in the ways that we would have wanted them to. But they are, I am excited that they're having an outdoor celebration. Lots of towns forgave that, and just said, "We're going to do the virtual one," and that was it. So the fact that we're moving ahead with that is a positive thing for Maynard. And you are right, that is this Friday. And you are right, that is this Friday, so hope for good weather. Okay. The Superintendent's Report, so there's three things listed on the agenda, the draft, school reopening plan, some budget updates, some Green Meadow Roof Updates. The school reopening plans are, that's probably the focus of this conversation, if you will. And as you know, some of this is going to be a repeat for some, but not all. We have done surveys of families, we have done surveys, the NEA has done surveys of staff. So we've been collecting data in terms of what does our community want for us in terms of reopening. And that, I will say, that was a couple of weeks ago, so it was prior to the most recent protocols involving safety and safety measures for school systems that, what we need to do. So, but still, we have about 60% of the families that would prefer a full return. At the time, that was with three feet. And about 40% that were more comfortable with, 40% more comfortable with six feet. And that mirrored the staff survey as well. So what that says to us internally as an admin team is that people want to come back and we know that that's better for students is to come back. As time's gone on and we've looked at the safety requirements, regionally, if we look at other towns around us, lots of people were at a, hey, full return, three feet within the last two weeks, including us, everybody's really shifted to feeling much more comfortable with a six-foot physical distancing, which then pushes us realistically into a hybrid model. So just, that's a little background information and comfortable saying that's really where most districts around the state are leaning, is toward a hybrid model and that's where we're leaning and really much more comfortable with a six-foot physical distancing limit. So, the plan, it's a draft plan, this is what the Commissioner has asked for and he's asked for from every community, every school district. And we go, so really what it was, was an opportunity for us as a school district to look at ourselves, look at our enrollment, look at our classrooms and analyze, how many kids can we actually fit in a classroom at three feet, at six feet, if we bring everybody back? When we have to put a student or a staff member in isolation, do we have space to do that? Where can we find that space to do that? So it's sort of a mini feasibility study for reopening. We did it, everybody did it. And I need to give credit to many, many, many teachers and administrators and committees and subcommittees of committees, really took a hard look at this on all aspects to come up with what makes sense and what are the options. And for this particular plan, just so you understand, it requires three plans. Even if as a district, we didn't think that we could come back in full in-person education, that was one of the options that we had to explain. So that's in here. And just so that's why it's there, it was a have-to, we don't think we can do that. Unfortunately, that's just not what's in the best interest of staff or students at this point. We are considering, it's not done, it's, we're leaning towards can some of the youngest students, the pre-K, grade one, kindergarten and grade one, could they come back full-time? Because it's hard to imagine what they can do remotely at five and six years old, etc., seven years old. So that's still, that's on the table, we're really trying to see, can we make that work? In addition, and that's in the plan, we've also looked at can some of our higher needs students, our special, some of our special education students, our EL students, some of our more at-risk students, can they come back on a more consistent basis? And that's in this plan. So we've come up with the plan. We've looked at full return and what that might look like and basically said, it doesn't work for us, we can't fit everybody, we don't have the capacity to do that and match the six-foot physical distancing. Then we looked at a hybrid model and a full remote model. And neither, none of the options required a great deal of detail at this point, this was really for us to show the Commissioner that yes, we've looked and here are what we think the options realistically are for Maynard. So hybrid model, and you can see in the plan, and this is kind of an interesting thing, I don't know if I'd say funny, but interesting. At the very beginning, when people started talking about hybrid models, lots of schools went with week on, week off. And that seemed to be where most people were falling and we weren't falling there. We talked about that and looked at that and felt like, well, that's nine days off continuously for a student, that's a long time. We weren't, so we kept, you know, pushing and pushing and trying to see what makes the most sense. Some of the districts were Monday, Wednesday, Friday, one week, and Tuesday, Thursday, the next week, and it flipped all the way through the semester. That felt kind of inconsistent for parents and students to be able, if they're trying to go back to work, to not have a consistent model. And ultimately, we landed, we're leaning towards a model that has two cohort, a cohort A, cohort B, so a Monday, Tuesday cohort is in school and a Thursday, Friday cohort is in school. Wednesday is a remote day for everybody, which gets students in the building, eyes on with staff, making those connections at least twice a week, every week. And why do I say that's kind of funny? Because this week, when Superintendents got together, there were several districts that thought this was the greatest thing and they're like, that's exactly what we're doing. So this, there is not one model, unfortunately, that I can say that regional districts are using, there's still groupings, but we're not the only ones using this model, is my point, several districts around us are leaning toward this model. Nobody that I've heard of as of today is leaning towards full return anymore. There were districts a few weeks ago that were and that has since changed. So, the plan itself, that's really it, it talks, those three things are what we need to provide to the Department of Education. And I've summarized them for you as opposed to reading you the document. It includes screenings and mask face coverings and hand hygiene, so there's a safety portion in the plan, which has been updated since the newest protocols came out. And it's funny, some of the districts, if you look around the state, they've taken that document, so it's a 19-page document that talks about safety protocols and they've simply lifted it and dropped it into their plan for DESI. But they don't need to, DESI knows that they gave it to us. So that's not necessarily, we don't need to import all of that in here, it's built in. What we did was look at the three different components that we were asked to look at and identify from data, from what parents said, from what staff said, what is the most likely option for us at this point? And why did we, why do we think that, based on the three models and all the criteria involved in that? So, that, this is our draft plan. Just so you understand, this gets submitted to DESI by July 31st. And then, with best of intentions, they get back to us quickly after reading all 278 of them and give us the thumbs up, I think. And we have a more formal plan that's due on August 10th, which from everything I've just said to you and from everything I'm learning, that is really going to be a hybrid model. And that's where we have lots of different committees working to really identify, so what do the safety protocols look like at each building? What do eating, what does lunch look like? What do the programming look like at each building? And we are, even right now, we're still waiting on some guidance, which we actually now expect tomorrow in terms of transportation and some of the specific programming around band and course. So that was brought up in conversation today. And those, some of those requirements could change our ultimate plan in August based on transportation. We're used to busing kids, we like to bus kids, it makes things convenient. We're also used to putting, you know, a certain number of kids on a bus, so if we can no longer put that number on and we have to run more than one run, I mean, those are things that we'll have to start to consider quickly once we get the specific guidance from the state on transportation. So let me tell, let me stop, I'll take a breath, I'm actually going to have a little sip of tonic. You, let me know if you have questions, if you want to think about something, or if you say, just keep going, I am glad to keep going. It's very quiet, is everybody muted?
No, I'm just listening.
Okay, Jessica?
Can you repeat where parents can find this draft?
Have we, let me ask, if we've posted this online or if it's in the.
We have.
Materials for this folder?
It's in materials, yes. And. Jen, is that what you've posted in the chat?
No, the chat is, yes, I'm sorry, yes, that's where you can find that piece. The other component of this is that, as Mr. Ha said, this is very much currently in draft form, we just did receive feedback from some of our team members this morning. So once a formal document is sort of created, we will be posting that on our webpage as well. At this point, it is, it is very draft, drafty.
And do we plan to do another survey? I've just heard lots of feedback from parents that the first survey they took, their minds may have changed somewhat, so just to make sure that we're staffing properly, will there be another survey prior to that final draft?
I would say yes, more based on your comment, but really based on the fact that some pretty specific safety requirements just came out after we did the first survey. So that may change people's feelings a little bit and there's more guidance coming out really every day. It's so fluid, so I think it would be reasonable to do another, probably shorter and simpler survey.
Yes.
So the answer is yes.
Okay, perfect.
And that survey will require, likely require a degree of commitment to in-person or remote, so as you say, Jessica, we can plan for staffing and those types of things. So differently than the first survey, that was more of a temperature check, this will be, you know, sort of let us know where you're, where you are.
Okay.
Do I do just have one question if I could?
Sure.
The, do we, are art and phys ed going to be included in this also or, because you said that the music and chorus is, but will that be incorporated into these schedules or is it?
Great question, no, that's a great question. So art seems like it really could be included a little more easily. Phys ed is a little more complicated in the, in the good weather, phys ed's a little bit easier because it can be outside and depending what you're doing, you can be, you can come up with a lesson that works where there's not as much contact. But it's still complicated because even if you're playing catch, you then have a ball and you're not supposed to be shipped. So it's complicated even for phys ed. Music's probably the most challenging one right now, just because of the singing and the air and the, etc.
Bethlin?
Yeah, I guess the, first, I do appreciate that this is a ton of work and in my day job, I'm talking to the kind of the experts around the country and the American Academy of Pediatrics and there's just not even, there's just not consensus even there, just for everyone to be aware, it's a very, very difficult because there's just not the evidence base because it's been evolving and unfolding and there's further information coming as we go, even now. So with that in mind, I guess one of the things I wanted to ask about was just where the consideration ends up coming is that you're, how you are considering learning for those, the groups that will need, need additional support. So for those groups that are at a higher risk and is that in the August 10th, you're going to lay out what you would do for them, where does that come into play? I know that you were talking about it, but I just.
I think it is minimally in here, it will certainly be spelled out in more detail in the August 10th one. But it is what, so what we've been talking about is do those groups, are they able to come Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, Friday, as opposed to just Monday, Tuesday or Thursday, Friday? But exactly what that looks like, that's what we'll need to work out. But we recognize that those are the students that we'd really want to have the most amount of contact with to help them be successful.
Right, yes, and I will say that along with that, some of the conversations in my circles where we're dealing with children that have medical conditions is some of the children that may have reason for some need of more support, for that very reason, it may be more considered, their family may decide that it's more a safety concern to have them in person. So also considering, and just to, I know, based on conversations I've had with you one-on-one and that Jennifer has mentioned before, but just to ask here, the consideration around what you'll do for folks if they're feeling like we just can't, we're not going to be able to come in person and yet my child has a greater need.
And we will work with them.
Yeah, and I know you're going to be having some forums for different groups, so that, of children to try to understand with the families what their considerations are.
We are.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So then, I guess that's, that's the biggest question I had for now, I appreciated Jessica's around and Jennifer's response around the second survey, given everything's, again, evolving so quickly. So I think that, I would just would like to second that that's, I'm glad to hear that that's going to be happening, yep.
Natasha?
Yes, so I had a couple of questions and thinking, I know that there have been other districts who are considering starting special education students first and allowing other students to start, just to allow the transition for a special education. Is that something that is being considered, given that it does take a little bit, the transition piece can be more impactful for those, especially under the circumstances?
So that's interesting, I haven't actually heard that yet, we have talked about transitioning all students in differently than we probably have in the past. So lots of districts will transition their transition years, so maybe grade six if it's the first year of, say, a middle school or in this case, grade five or four or high school, grade nine. But we've started the conversations in Maynard around how can we transition sort of everybody on different days at the very beginning, because we think it'll be, it's a big change to go from being full remote to back in a school building, even if it's just half-capacity, but having to wear a mask and having to be in school and be around people when that hasn't been the norm for months upon months. So I think that is part of our discussions, not just for one population, but really, I think it's a good suggestion, I think it just applies to everybody.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, I know that was one of the, to kind of Bethlin's point, one of the themes around prioritizing, you know, certain populations and, you know, as everyone might, as a whole grade might come back, I just, you know, thinking about what it might take for our staff also and just everyone's anxiety will be, is there the possibility to consider a softer, like even if it's just a one day, where special education students might be able to like see the classroom, see the space, you know, as they may have different, you know, processing to that environment before it's, you know, understand what the rules are a little bit more, that might take a little bit more time than addressing the whole class entirely, so that was just a thought. I do, I do appreciate the idea of the hybrid model that is, that provides a consistent schedule where it's days each week, I think that that is certainly important, again, as we're considering prioritizing certain populations of students, that routine is very critical. And I think also for families in general, you know, keeping that up, you know, as you're getting used to it and you're changing the schedule the next week, I think that would be very hard. So I think that that is certainly great to think about. Is there any consideration about starting remote first and then maybe fine-tuning professional development and curriculum a little bit better to devote more time? And then going into a hybrid maybe at the end of September, per se? I feel like we're kind of on the state's timeline, but I don't know if that is, if that's to our detriment, that may be allowing us more flexibility with our staff to, because I think at some point, the reality is we could go back to remote if, you know, circumstances, health circumstances change. And should we be more fine-tuning that process a little bit more to start off with? I don't know if there's conversation about that.
Lots of conversation about that. And it is the state's timeline, you're absolutely right, there's kind of a push between what's in everybody's best interest for health and safety and education. And there's really two groups of thought out there right now, one is we really want to get students back in the building, but we want to do it safely. And there's another line of thought that we could start remotely and/or, and/or we will end up remotely. And I think there's pretty strong agreement in both camps that we ultimately will end up there, just because it's New England and it's, you know, we're going to have flu season, which we typically do and we won't know if it's flu or if it's COVID and so it's likely we will end up in a remote model, I don't think anybody. I don't think anybody argues that point. Because there's been such a strong push to have FaceTime and get students back in the building, at this point, we would be, I'm comfortable saying, we would be able to make that decision, absolutely. But we would be the only ones making that decision at this point. That's not been in the conversation yet to go remote and then transition in and then transition back out potentially. I don't.
Well, I know that Lexington pushed back to start a little bit, you know. Yeah, no, and I don't know. I mean, I know everyone's kind of looking at their population. I'm just thinking about how, you know, how comfortable our staff are with remote. And if that is the inevitable possibility, you know, and it would have to be a response that would be triggered in a day's moment possibly, you know, are we at a place comfortably that we would be able to do so in the moment that our staff and our families feel comfortable, you know, doing? And so, that's a worry I just have. And I understand that there is a push for onsite. I just know that, you know, the feedback from the fall, from the spring, you know, just really pushes for a better remote experience. And so, I just want to make sure we're good, we're good there.
I think that's a great point. And I think that's true from other superintendents that I've talked to and from my own experience, that spring was sort of thrust upon us. And it had to happen very quickly. And there were very few districts that had spent years planning for this. There were some that had done much more with technology and much more with remote learning, but it takes a long time to do that. None of us did that. So, we had to regroup and really figure out, so what does that look like? And some people did it really well. They fell into it naturally. And other people had to work super hard to make it work. But even the commissioner said, you know, the expectations for if there, if and when there is remote this year will look differently than remote in spring. So, some of the things he talked about, like last year, we weren't taking attendance, per se, you know, in the spring. This year, this coming year, if we go to a remote model, we will be taking attendance. There will be a higher level of accountability. There will be grades. It will look differently. And I think us, you know, Maynard, like everybody else, we will have learned many things from spring so that we can do it differently.
What about contingency for the roof for the K Wing? I know that there was conversation at the Board of Selectmen meeting this week about proceeding with a contract. They're having some reduced, better pricing consideration that it did not sound like they were halting or that. And I don't know.
We can talk about that now if you like.
If that contingency planning, that if that roof and that K Wing is not available, I guess I'm wondering, is that also being factored in?
It is. So, that's a little bit later, but it sort of fits the conversation. You asked the question, I can address the.
Okay, no, we can do it for later because I know it's the green metal roof update later.
But it's connected, so it's not a bad time.
Okay. And then my last really kind of teacher staffing questions is, I know there's a lot of concern about staffing, you know, when, what if a teacher, you know, we have, who are considering leaves, taking a leave or not returning and, you know, under the Response Act possibly, and having a potential shortage of teachers. How comfortable are you with Maynard? I saw the survey results, which look like most of the staff are. But given that things, the temperature of the climate seems to change almost week to week, I don't know if you're hearing possibly other concerns that would be, I guess, would impact obviously the learning experience for kids if we don't have subs, per se, for this process? Or are we training subs for this?
No. It is a concern. Right now, we don't, I have not heard from lots of staff that they're not planning on returning. Do I think that people could take leaves and do what they need to do to take care of themselves and their family? Absolutely. Do I think substitutes will be a viable solution realistically? I'll just tell you the truth, I don't think that's a viable solution. Most of our subs are either really young or they're on the other end of the spectrum, they're retired, they're older people, they do a phenomenal job, but they probably are in the at-risk category for this. And we'll think about what we pay subs, like everybody else. Would you want to come to a school next year? So, I think that will be a challenge. So, to your point, we're not training subs right now.
Right, and I guess that brings me back to the first thing about reinforcing the remote experience with all of those other pieces that could, variables that could kind of shift at any point, should we be, you know, doing more attention to a remote, considering that might be where we end up at some point.
So, it's a good point and we are taking everything under consideration. I mean, I think we all know this, I'll just say it so that it gets said. I mean, one of the other reasons that the commissioner, the governor, they're saying, hey, you should go back to school is, I think they really want to open the economy. You can't do that in a remote model.
Right, I get it. That's, I think that's separate from the safety consideration. So, I.
It absolutely is.
To me, that brings the politics of the matter in and what I, you know, hoping that we, you know, can avoid. But I do agree, I think that's the reality, which makes some of the information, the guidance we receive, you know, people question it, right? What is the motive? What is the intent on that? Is it really safety or is it really, you know, opening?
So, to your point, I think it's both. And I think that's what, as superintendents, we're trying to use some of the medical advice and recommendations and not just the commissioner of education, although I think he's using it as well. But really taking in all that information. And if you can maintain the six feet and you're wearing masks, and like one of the things that changed recently in terms of masks, so for the last several weeks, it was pre-K, K1, 2. If you want to wear a mask, go heavy, you don't have to. Grades three and up and staff, you have to. Now, most districts have made policy that says pre-K through 12 and staff. So, I think the safety is what we're using just to get to that in-person model, even in a hybrid, if it remains safe. And if it doesn't, then to your point, we absolutely will revert to the remote model.
I just want to jump in on that piece related to what, you know, why are we using the guidance from the state and those sorts of things? And, you know, consistently on the commissioner's calls, you know, he's not listening to the governor or the economic advisory council, if you will. Those are not the people he's referencing when he talks about any of this guidance or any of this feedback. He is referencing the pediatrician associations and the medical experts and the epidemiologists. And, you know, on today's call, one of the things he mentioned were the, you know, primary care physicians that are reporting increased suicidal ideation as students are staying home, you know. So, I think part of the other reason, and I appreciate the notion of wanting to firm up and to do some things with the remote component.
Oh, I think.
Really an important center of connection for our students.
We lost you for a minute.
Oh, okay. So, just to keep it short, we're finding schools are, my internet connection, is it, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, we're finding schools are a really important center for our student communities that have a lot, and we knew this, right? That have a lot to do with their mental health. And so, even if we were to be, have the, you know, the best, most bang-up, remote learning model possible, I think we would still be pushing for a return to in-person learning because we know it's good for kids and we know that we have students who need that. So, you know, I just don't want folks who are listening in to, you know, yeah, 100% part of the reason that we need to get back into school is so that families can go back to work and things of that nature. But there is a really important element for our students of seeing their teachers and seeing their friends and having those connections academically, intellectually, and socially. And those are the conversations that are being driven, both at the state level and at the district level.
Bethland?
Just to know, I, so I, the American Academy of Pediatrics had put out their guidelines. I know the people, like where they've been on, I've been on conversations with them where they talked about putting those together. And the reason was not, they were trying to bring in exactly what Jennifer just said, that consideration around mental health. And to also, they're actually going to layer on another set of guidelines related to considerations for children who are on IEPs and 504s to try to help further guide those conversations. Because, and to be perfectly honest personally, I'm honestly not sure where I stand for my family and what they need. And one of the things we were just talking about today was that decision-making, shared decision-making is like key right now because everyone's situation is different and because the actual evidence base and therefore the level of strong guidance just isn't there. So, it has to be around your individual circumstances and really trying to make the best decision for your personal family. And so, we are trying to really help elevate the shared decision-making to help families make these decisions. So, I just wanted to point that out because it is difficult all around for all the reasons people have been bringing.
Okay, Jess?
I just have a quick question that kind of loops into all of that. Has there been any discussion at all about giving either some earlier access to incoming classes to their teachers or to social workers or guidance counselors to do assessments to see with each individual child, where are you social, emotionally, academically? And checking in on food insecurities, things along those lines? Because people's circumstances may have drastically changed since we left in March, not just with academics, but are we going to look at each child and do an intake to see what needs may have changed and where they're at? Is there any conversation around that?
Good question, and I would need to check on like where that is in the planning stages. I know that those types of things are what people are talking about for the beginning of September, when the kids come back to really get us, get eyes on them and do that type of intake in the beginning of the school year.
And then, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, do we want to ask Jeff if he has any thoughts on that?
Sure.
Jeff, can we put you on the spot again?
He's muted. There we go.
You know, you had mentioned that second survey. I wonder if that's a way to get a little feedback from parents. Now, as far as the kids coming back, one of the things I'd love to find out is, how are the kids now academically compared to when the school shut down in March? So, we can see what level of regression did we have during that time to work on how we plan for the recoupment. As far as the social-emotional piece, you know, dip-sticking for that as well as, or not even dip-sticking, I mean, our teachers should be comfortable enough with the students, I would hope, and the team leaders knowing the kids well enough, that we could do, whether it's a universal survey or some sort of brief assessment, just to see where the kids are. But yeah, those discussions have been brought up, not to the depth that I think all of us would want them to be though. But absolutely, you know, the trauma of now you're going away from school and now we're saying because school wasn't safe, now we want you to come back because we, you know, school is safe. Maybe that affects parents more than the kids, but still, it's affecting a group of kids. And how do you identify them? My assumption is the guidance counselors and the teachers and the team leaders know the kids well enough. And the parents have at least one contact at school to be able to say, you know, Jeff had a real tough time remote. He's really anxious about coming back. I'm sure part of that preparation of the teachers for their cohort A or B is going to be in identifying the paths that the kids can take. Who are their friendly forces? Who is their go-to people? But yes, Jessica, absolutely. We need to do that piece as much as looking at the academic regression as well.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay. Does anyone, Jess, did you have a second question?
I just had a quick clarifying question for the draft plan for pre-K through 1. Would they also have that Wednesday off? Or would, because it says full in-person. So, pre-K through 1 would have the Wednesday off? Or they would be in school on Wednesday?
They would have the Wednesday off, but they would go Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
And they would still get the six-foot distancing even though they're getting the full in-person? Or would it be three feet for pre-K? Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
We would want to maintain six.
All right, thank you.
Great, okay. Natasha?
I just wanted to highlight, I know Jeff is going to be, I believe, and Brian can, that you're going to have a parent session for special ed as well. I know that when, that's something, right. So, I know that's something that some families are, will have an opportunity and look forward to, you know, sharing more specific questions. And I also just wondered if it would be helpful because kids have been homeless, just hearing Jeff speak about it made me kind of, would it be helpful for parents to kind of do like a one-page, like, hey, assessment? Like just a parent assessment of my kid? You know, just say, this is, these are the challenges that, you know, we had. And so, that that would be provided to teachers, you know, as parent feedback, more personal level, so that when they start, they can be as a data point. Like this is what a parent has identified, like my kids, like a couple of questions, like how did your child do with, you know, at home in the spring with, you know, math or reading or whatever the subjects are? I just thinking about how we can incorporate that parent feedback in a consistent manner. And that might help teachers at some point, engaging that.
And we can carry that message forward. I think that's a very typical strategy that lots of teachers use in the beginning of the year. I know as a teacher, that's something that, you know, you've, you ask the parents to write a letter about their student, you know, what are their strengths, what are their struggles? What do I not, what do I, what would take me a long time to know about them that you want me to know? So, we can carry that conversation and see where that goes.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeff?
Oh, he's muted again.
And we're meeting with the CPAC tomorrow.
Correct.
I believe at 10 o'clock. So, certainly that could be one of the agenda items is how do we, or what would be a short questionnaire to go out to the parents to get that information? And that information has actually been recommended by Dr. Johnston as well, to get that feedback from parents and how was the experience for the students? So, yes, it'll be one of the agenda items tomorrow.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Mary? Sorry, Bethland, you're next. You're muted. Mary's muted.
I'm mute, okay. And Jeff, that's the, I was going to bring this up later, but one of my questions was, how are you reaching out to parents of the special needs students between now and opening? So, incorporating that early, early on, you know, well before we go to get back to school. So, glad to hear that, you know, that that will be a piece to it. Because another piece was, and I don't know if this is the time or not, I had a couple of experiences in the last couple of weeks of young students that were melting down in public situations because they have basically been in the house for three months and they don't know how to socialize even with their peers. So, one of my questions was, how are we having the guidance department between now and opening? Reach out to the parents and offer suggestions on maybe what they should be doing with their students at this moment, how they should be talking to their students, maybe, you know, getting them out to a playground by themselves or things of that nature so that when they are going back to school, that's not the first time that they're back being socialized. So, and then, Brian, I just had one question about, and I think you had brought this up at one of the parent forums, was about having maybe a half of day of professional development, maybe going, you know, maybe during that Wednesday, part of that Wednesday where the kid, where everybody's going to be remote. Can you speak to maybe how?
Sure.
Going to incorporate professional development?
Right, so actually, in the hybrid model, we actually are talking about, and the calendar will be on the agenda at the next school committee meeting. But one of the things we're talking about is adding professional development days at the beginning of the year so that teachers have four or five professional development days before school starts to really, some of that's COVID-related safety precautions, distance learning, etc. And then also, as the year goes throughout the year, using some of that time on Wednesday for professional development, whether it's around remote learning and identifying just certain specific areas that we want to focus on as a district continuously throughout the year.
Excellent, thank you.
Bethland?
So, two things. One was that they're, based on where things stand just from this plan, and we were talking about transportation and waiting to hear more on that, I just wanted to highlight for everyone, as we look further towards. there, based on where things stand just from this plan, and we were talking about transportation and waiting to hear more on that, I just wanted to highlight for everyone, as we look further towards budget too, that from what I remember of the conversations, you can remind me, tell me if I got it wrong. At the tri board meeting, there were two costs that were not going to necessarily, were not folded into Carers Act funding that could be impacted for COVID. And one was transportation costs. And the other was any additional costs related to trying to help make sure that we're supporting all students' needs, depending on how that is shaking out. And I just wanted to make sure, wanted to say that here while we're in the middle of this conversation, see if I got that, make sure I got that right.
Yeah. So there's, there is money and we, I mean, Carers Act money, most of it, we're allocating it, you know, whether we've asked for additional technology. So, yeah.
And then I think transportation would end up being additional.
Transportation could be a problem.
Yeah, yeah. So I just, just for everyone to have in mind, if it does turn out that in order to make this work and, and whatever they say about how transportation has to work, that will need, that's going to need to be figured out still. That's, that's a an important part of the equation.
Correct.
Okay, Natasha, and then I think we need to move on.
Yeah, I just actually was reflecting back to my notes from the tri board as well, Beth Lynn. So thank you for the, the transportation piece. The other part I was asking, I remember, I think Jennifer mentioned there was some opportunity, when you think about staff, because there could be scenarios where staff are working on-site, but then their child's school might be remote. And I thought there was something mentioned about a shared, I don't know, Jennifer started speaking about it. I didn't take deep notes on it. I thought we might hear more. It was like a collaborative or a shared thing that that got brought up. I don't know. That may, I might remember wrong, Jennifer?
There's a couple of different conversations that are happening at the state level, just in regards to making sure that teachers and administrators working in education are able to attend to their, to their jobs. And there's a couple of different conversations that are happening at the state level around how this, how we may accommodate that within the, the school in the district in which the educator lives, would, would prioritize those students for in-person instruction, but those are very high-level conversations at this point in time. And, and I don't think it incurs additional cost, if you will. It's just a logistical component.
No, no, I, yeah, no, that, that was something. I know there was something at the state level that you were, had mentioned or alluded to, but we hadn't really talked about the plan at that moment. So I didn't know if that would be in the final, or it sounds like it's being talked about with the staff, which is the most important.
Okay, um, I just want to add one thing. I, in, for the comments, I'm getting a lot of questions and people are expressing frustration in their inability to ask questions. And I'm wondering if it would make sense for us to have some sort of, not a public hearing, but some sort of open discussion night where we can set aside time to let parents speak directly to us and ask us questions that we can answer.
Would it be us or would it be the, the administration?
Well, it'd be the administration. Because obviously we don't, we don't have the answers for that.
Right. Would it be maybe after we finalize the plans they're looking for, like?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying when. I'm just saying there's a need for something.
So yeah, we can add that. We've done three with parents already. We can do another one for community members as well. Or parents, maybe there's just more parents.
I'm thinking maybe, yeah, no, it's mostly parents. And I'm thinking, you know, maybe something in the evening when people can attend because not everyone's able to during the day.
Yep. We can schedule something.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, new guidance has come out since some of the parent, prior parent sessions as well. So that's, that'll be helpful, I think.
Yeah. Okay, um, so Brian, do you want to move on to your next?
Sure.
To the budget update or is that Wayne?
Um, really I can handle, there's not a great update right now. I mean, FY20, I will just tell you, we will end up balanced. Wayne and Mike Guzzo from the town are working on just moving some things around so that some accounts that just need to be balanced and how it's allocated on the accountant side of things match. But there's no concern there. I've been assured that that will end up in balance. That's fine. And really FY21, I mean, the update would be we're operating on the approved budget, as is everybody. But that's really a little bit unknown because we don't exactly know chapter 70. We don't exactly know what the governor's budget's going to be. So there really isn't an update on that portion yet because we don't have any hard numbers to go off of.
Does anyone have any questions regarding Natasha?
I know, Brian, I'd mentioned this to you directly, but just thinking about how we're monitoring unenrollment potentially and how that might additionally factor into FY21 considerations, depending on, you know, if families are, you know, needing to unenroll to homeschool, what, what impact that might be in contrast to what we've done in years past. You know, I'm guessing that, that would, they would have to submit a plan, I think anyway, to Jennifer, but yeah, so I'd just be curious about hearing those numbers as, as the year goes on or the next couple of meetings, if we were seeing an uptick in that.
So what, we do track those and there hasn't been an uptick yet, but we will keep track and keep you all informed if that starts to shift at all. Because you're right, it's a big difference between when we talk remote and then you talk homeschooling. That's a very different thing. So we'll keep you up to date on that. Absolutely.
Great. And then the other question about budget was, I know Irene had mentioned at the last meeting that there didn't need to be any cost center. Everything seemed to be fine with, nothing needed to be shifted. I just want to make sure that's still the consideration that the school committee doesn't need to sign off on any transfers.
Natasha, I had a discussion with Wayne about that and, and he's looking into it, but he did not seem to think that there was going to be a need.
Okay. All right. So we're still kind of status quo, whatever shifting has happened, it's still within cost centers. Good. Thank you.
Beth Lynn?
This is just a quick thing that someone asked me, as far as any additional enrollment that we know could come from 129 Parker or other development in town. I'm not clear that that's a factor at this point, but I just wanted to ask it.
So if you're waiting for me to answer, I will look into that because I do not know the answer to 129 Parker, but I will look into it.
I, I feel like that's like a added into the equation, but don't feel like it's not an immediate. I think it's not being occupied right now. It's just something to consider in the next, within the next year.
Okay.
Okay. Brian, do you want to continue? Brian? Do you want to continue?
Yes. And that would be in, that would be non-stable Wi-Fi, that little lag there.
Excellent.
Waiting, I have to, anyway. Green metal roof. So I have had numerous conversations with the town manager Greg Johnson, with Justin DeMarco from GPW, who know, both have been involved with the roof much longer than I and have pretty strong feelings about that roof. So they have, right now, they are, we are looking at getting the roof done both over the pre-K side of that building and the kindergarten side. Justin feels very strongly that that's the best thing to do. We're hoping they're doing a assessment, a structural assessment this week of that to see if it has to both be done. We're feeling like it does.
I thought the assessment had already been done and we were just waiting for the report.
Well, as of yesterday, they hadn't, they were, and maybe it's a second one or it's a slightly different one, but they were waiting on some documentation for them to get up on the roof and actually do a small cut to look at supply, to look at the materials, so they know what they would need to order.
Okay.
So I, you know, this has been a very cooperative effort. I will say Greg Johnson, town manager, has really carried the brunt of it, along with Kyle. Sorry, with Justin and Kyle. I'll, I'll give them both credit. They've both been very, very helpful. But the recommendation at this point, pending any, you know, anything really that gets added to this would be to do both, both sides of that, which would close that section of the building for 40, it looks like it's about a 45-day project. We don't know exactly for sure until they get up there and actually put a timeline together for us, but that's kind of just high level. It's looking like that, which has the potential to then look at the calendar for kindergarten, for pre-k and kindergarten. They may in fact, it may give us a reason to say you have to start a week or two weeks later than anticipated, but we'll know that in August. So it won't be a surprise come September, but that may be a necessity to get the roof done and not have anybody in that section of the building for the short term. So if, uh, when I get a final update on that, I will, and I, I should be able to do that next week as well. I think we'll have a little more information by then from Greg and Justin.
Yeah, it'd be great to get, I know that's kind of a parallel happening, you know, right? And I don't want to lose sight of that for the, just for the community. So it'd be good to hear like updates, maybe at part of your superintendent report each, and if we don't have a meeting that week, maybe just a quick, because I know it might be rapidly evolving as you, you know, they're ordering stuff or when it starts. You know, and it did sound like at the board of selection meeting, and Lydia probably can speak to that as well, that they were very much motivated, moved forward. And I, I think it was the, what, what they had shared was the, the load, they had done the load, right Lydia? But they were waiting for the report, but it sounded like it was a moot point because they were going forward anyway with doing it and which, you know, adds to the complexity of reopening.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I think that's the gist of it. Yeah.
And I will absolutely update you on that.
Great. Okay. So does that conclude the superintendent's report?
Yes, it does.
That means we are now opening up citizens' comments. I have received several emails which I will read. I would just like to remind the public that citizens' comments are basically for us to hear your thoughts and, and and for you to provide us with input. It's not a two-way conversation. And so one parent has expressed their frustration in that. And so that is why I brought up the, you know, the possibility of having an open forum discussion at some point in the near future. So the first one I have is from, I'm not sure if it's a parent or a teacher, and forgive me if I get your name wrong, Carly Kyvelos from 34 Wood Lane. And she says, in-person sped instruction, especially speech and OT should be prioritized for our students. Remote therapy cannot be an acceptable replacement for high-need students, especially after the interruption of services in the spring. Thank you. And the next one is from Marius Albita. And he is at, I think it's he, he is at 1 Taylor Road. Okay. I live with my wife Beth, two kids, and my 83-year-old mother at 1 Taylor Road. I'm seriously concerned about the reopening our schools with such a vaguely drafted plan. I would actually like to be able to speak at these meetings because sending the comments this way does not seem to be a very efficient way. We're in the middle of a pandemic. People are dying and I'm seriously concerned about sending my children back to school as a scientist, as a father, as a caretaker for my elderly mother with Alzheimer's, Parkinson's, and congestive heart failure. The people of this town should be able to speak at this meeting via chat because this is really a matter of life and death for us all. And I have one from, I believe is his wife, Elizabeth Albita, at 1 Taylor Road. My questions are, what percentage of your staff is coming back into the classroom in the hybrid model? And what percentage of the student body has opted for remote learning? My comment is, there are no other countries trying to come back into the classroom with our rate of infection. And we are learning that children can transmit COVID at the same or higher rates as adults. I worry about the dangers we are putting kids and staff in for the sake of trying to feel normal again. But we cannot keep kids interacting and also keep people safe. People need the details about what their kid's school day will actually look like. I imagine that kids will have to be in assigned seats all day, even on the, I think she means bus, and at lunch, and not really able to interact with one another. And we'll probably have to go to remote learning at some point, given the realities of flu season and sub-coverage. But who in our community will be hurt first? I'm not sure what the real benefit of in-person school is besides childcare. And from Diana Bergeron at 28 Nick Lane. I'm a single mom who works a full-time job. Dad lives in another state. Would you take into consideration grouping specific kids together based on joint childcare availability, such as a nanny share for the days they would be home? I've relied on Excel, which has been affordable. Will Excel be open? And the last one I have is Gregory Price. Uh, this is Amy Price at 16 Allen Drive. I want to first thank you all for your work. Second, I want to thank all of the teachers and staff. I realize the spring was a surprise for all of us and it was what it was. I have two children at Fowler, a rising eighth grader and a rising sixth grader. I will not be sending my children to the full week of school due to medical issues and ask at-risk people in our home. Additionally, we do not know what the fall will bring. We do not even have one-year experience with COVID-19. The main issue for our family is that one of our children has significant learning disabilities. Remote learning, the way it was, was not effective at all. He was not able to access most of his services, i.e. for dyslexia, et cetera. He has fallen even farther behind than before. Both of my children needed support that was just not available, despite some of our teachers' best efforts. For hybrid or remote, full remote, I would like better access to services addressed in an IEP and more structured learning, such as engagement in class meetings, real-time instruction, et cetera. It was very easy for my child to turn his camera off and play on his phone. Thank you so much. And I'm just going to check and see if I have any others.
Something from Mike Waldron? I think that was meant to be a
Oh, was it? Okay. And from Mike Waldron, who is the MEA president, we need to keep in mind the social emotional feelings of teachers.
I think there's some, I don't know, some noise.
Miles! Miles! You're making too much noise. Everyone can hear you.
Sorry. Probably making a sandwich.
He's making dinner. Okay, so those are the comments. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. They are appreciated. They are not going to go unheard. And we will do what we can to try to accommodate everyone at a future meeting, open forum, so that people can voice their issues and their concerns. And now we go on to policies for review. So the first one, IHBHE, remote learning, new from MASC. We discussed it briefly at the last school committee meeting. I'm just giving an update on it. It was presented in tandem with IHBHE-dash-E, remote learning, to the MEA and the MESA because it will affect them. And the policy subcommittee is going to refute, review it and then determine if other policies are affected by what it includes before we present it to the school committee for approval. The MEA and MESA are going to review it for potential conflicts with future collective bargaining or negotiations. And that is, that goes along with IHBHE-dash-E, remote learning, and that And that is basically a list of things to take into account when you are considering IHBHE. The second one, INJDD, social media policy, we received it back from LEGAL. You have all received a copy of it with the mask edits that were done. The MEA and MESA have also received it and reviewed it. We discussed it. There are some concerns regarding First Amendment rights. And so they are going to go back to their eboards and discuss their concerns. We are going to take the concerns that they've already voiced and look into them with LEGAL. And we are also going to be sharing this with the other unions in the district that haven't seen it yet. The custodial union and the secretarial union. I think that, do we just have the four? Brian, do you know?
Colleen, four, yeah.
Yes, we just have the four. Okay, so all four will be engaged in, in creating and approving this policy. So the next one, 112, which is agenda format. Now, so in, in creating this new agenda format, Brian and I discussed ways that we could try to shorten the meetings. And obviously, that may not happen tonight. But we have come up with a new agenda format that takes into account the one that MASK has. And that is BEDB and BEDBE. And what we are looking to do is replace Policy 112, which is the current school committee agenda standard form and agenda items, and replace it with BEDB and BEDBE. Now, this is a first reading, so there's no vote required. But if there are any comments on these policies, if anyone wants, yes, Natasha?
So the, the agenda format BEDE?
BEDB?
BEDB. No, not, not, not the dash one, the, just the. I was looking at a couple of others, because I remember Dorothy said that, you know, either go to choose as a template, but also look and see how other districts. And I saw Ashland had one, it was basically about 95% kept the context. There was one thing, when it talks about in the third paragraph, items of business, maybe suggested by any school committee member, staff. They added for any resident of Ashland. I don't know if we would want to consider prioritizing the needs of Maynard, so maybe any resident of Maynard, you know, for our business. So I know, I, I thought about this, I know Colleen mentioned that there's sometimes special interest groups around the state who are looking to advocate for no different things. And so anyway, so just that would
Right, so that we don't have people coming in from other places. Is that what you're, you're getting at?
Yeah, yeah, it seemed like it was, made sense. I mean, I'd be interested to hear, you know, thoughts on that. And then, or just if you guys want to bat that consideration around. And then the other part they had in there where it talks about, it says, they continue on from that same paragraph. So this is the inclusion of such items, however, will be at the discretion of the chair of the school committee. And then they added this sentence, which I remember is in the, it came from, I think, the role of the chair. It says, "If a member wants an item on the agenda, it is not successfully at, at placing it before the committee. It may be asked by the majority to add it despite the objections of the chair." And I remember that MASK had language that said similar, that members may request it placed on if the chair doesn't feel appropriate, that it can be, the committee can override the chair by a vote majority to place an item on the agenda. So that would be like two suggestions, and I can
Yeah, that, um, that actually, that language is in another policy somewhere else. I can, I can find that for you.
I just thought it was, it sounded like part of the, if we're looking at the agenda, I just thought Ashland kind of worded it good. So I don't know if we could maybe look at how they did it.
Sure.
If it's somewhere else, though, then I don't, I didn't, I didn't know if we had it added somewhere.
We don't yet. No.
Okay, okay. And then the, the, the format, well, maybe, I don't know if anyone else has it on, on feedback on that one first. I can, before I move on, I don't know what you prefer.
Does anyone else have feedback on either of these? Nope. Okay, Natasha?
Okay, um, do the, the roll call of the committee, do we want to indicate that it's if remote? I don't, or I know that normally, like in regular, regular times, we don't normally open with a, a roll call vote. I don't know if that's
I think this is because this is how school committees do it regardless of whether they're in remote.
Okay, all right. So are we saying that we would do that continuously even outside of COVID?
Yeah.
Where we would open with a roll call?
Yeah, we don't have to. If, if someone doesn't want to do that, we don't have to, but
I wasn't sure if that was the suggested thing, because I know a lot of our policies are a little dated. And then just the three things, I don't know if we want to incorporate the student representative report. Didn't seem like there was a place for that. The chair report, and then the citizens' comments.
Yes, okay, so
Those are the three things that we, I don't, and I don't know if there's consideration of taking them off, I just, or if that was intentional or just
Nope, this, again, this is a first reading. These are directly from MASK. We haven't added or taken anything away from them, which is why I'm asking for feedback. And to your point about the student rep report, my hope is to get a student rep as a non-voting member on the school committee this year. Because that is technically something that we are supposed to have. And not just have students reporting to us, but actually participating at the table and contributing to the conversations. And the same with CPAC. I also would like to have a member of CPAC Advisory Board at the table. Again, they would be a non-voting member, but by law, they are supposed to have a seat at the table. And so those are two things that I would like to accomplish this year. So yes, student report, you said chair report.
Chair report, and then citizens' comments. Um, I also wanted, are we looking to only do one? And then where would, where are you envisioning that to be going forward?
So in, in the other districts that I have looked at, their agendas, they all have one comment period. I haven't seen any that have more than one. And they generally do it at the beginning because the agenda and all the supporting materials are released a few days or two days prior to the meeting. So people have a chance to familiarize themselves with them and then submit comments accordingly. It's, comments are supposed to be more of a proactive rather than a reactive discussion to what is being said during the meeting. So, so that's really the thought behind it. And again, I think in the past, because there have, there were communication problems between the district and the community, and because materials weren't always prepared ahead of time or on, you know, available to the community prior to the meetings. It wasn't possible to request comments ahead of time. And I'm not saying that once we get back in person, we won't allow comments in real time. I just think that for our purposes now, it makes it much easier to have one set of comments at the beginning where people can say what they need to. And, and then we can either discuss putting concerns on a future agenda, or if it's appropriate, we could address those concerns during the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, so you're thinking, I know we, we had kind of after COVID, we kind of stuck with that a little bit more, like keeping them in the, in the front. And then I, I think with the format today, because it was, we had like the, we beefed up like the chair, the super, it kind of felt like it was in the middle. So I, I wonder if we maybe move it under the minutes approval? So it, I'm just thinking if people are sharing, if people want to come and give a feedback, that they may not have to wait always. That was one of the reasons why I think we kind of thought the front part would be good. I don't know, I'm just thinking, because it makes it hard, I think, to manage depending on how big the chair reports are, right?
Right, right. Okay, um, yeah, we can talk about that.
And then the, the other part, just looking at like the, the payment of bills and financial report. Would that be like a standing item on every, are you envisioning that on every agenda?
Yeah, not necessarily. And that's something that I think we would discuss with Wayne, Brian, and Mary, and I would discuss with Wayne to see, again, all of this stuff, this is just the standard mask, and we can amend it and customize it as we need to.
Great. And then I know separately, we, I circulated later, but everyone has their plates full right now, is just the, the annual calendar. So I think adding, you know, getting that up to date, I think will, will complement this, I think, very well as well. So good, thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, so we won't vote on this tonight. Yes, Bethlyn?
I just want to point out that there's a separate policy referenced here for public comment. So we might want to just look at that in tandem so that we get like the full picture of that one we're looking at. This as well, just for next time, it might, it just might be helpful.
Can you explain to me?
So at the bottom, cross-references for BEDB, BEDH, public comment at school committee meetings. So whatever we, if we're, I think we might be operating under, I don't think we're operating under theirs. I think we have our own that we're operating under at this time.
I think we approved one recently.
We approved BEDH.
It was
Which is one, another reason why I wanted to
Yeah, so then, so I'm just thinking, it might be good to just see them in tandem so that we can
Yeah, no, we can do that.
For next time.
I can do that, yep.
Yep, okay, very good.
Thank you.
With Okay. And then the final Find my agenda. The final one is the bylaws, Policy 102. And I went through, I found the matches of the mask policies for the various articles in our bylaws. And then I also found additional policies that were, they either expanded upon what was in the bylaws or was a duplicate, were a duplicate of the bylaws. And those are Policy 101, 103, 113, 114, 115, 131, 140, 141, 151, 152, and 171. So those are going to be what we are going to attack next. And I'm just letting you know, I don't think we can vote tonight because there are too many things that are involved. And the, the policy subcommittee really needs to organize this and be able to present it to you in a more collated fashion. So, so that's just to keep in mind. But we did, I do, I do want to just reiterate, and Mary, you weren't there, but we discussed this at the workshop with MASK. And having the bylaws is really redundant and unnecessary and actually puts us at risk for certain issues. So it makes us vulnerable. So we, we discussed eliminating this.
That was something that we created. It wasn't from the state, right? The 102, that was something that we had done in Maynard?
Um, I, I assume so. I'm not sure. But it, it's not, it is not
That's okay, yep.
Part of the town bylaws. I think it was just something the school committee put together. And it was last looked at in 2015. So, all right, Natasha?
I wonder if we, because until all of these get approved, it will take some time. I wonder if we should just vote to rescind Policy 102? Because it does talk about public comments differently than what we've already approved. And I don't, it sounds like since it's not necessary, that maybe in that stead, it's not, we should, we should just maybe rescind it. So it, I don't know, that would be my, my suggestion. I don't know if anyone
We could potentially make a motion to rescind Policy 102 and thereby adopt all of the relevant mask policies in its place.
I think I'd want to see the policy, all the other ones, though, because I know there's some of them, like their duties of the clerk. I don't know if we've
But we don't want to leave ourselves with, we don't, we want to make sure we're still covered. If we rescind this without replacing it, that's problematic. Bethlyn?
Yeah, what if we instead just rescind the portions that conflict with, with the most recent policies that we instituted? So if we make that vote, then we're covering ourselves for those things that conflict that the most recently adopted policy supersedes Policy 112. I'm so bad at remembering that.
We also, we also, yeah, we also have the, the voting thing, too. That was the other piece that was out of compliance, that the ballot vote, where it talked about that, and Sarah said we can't do that. So that was, like, a lot of it was, it seemed like, was those, that two pieces. So maybe rescind both of those considerations?
We could. I don't know if we're going to have another vote anytime in the near future, so we have time to be able to fix that one without needing to worry about it. So I, I agree that that was a problem.
Right, well, that's why I'm just saying, is it easier? Because the other area, the other things are more of how we are operating, right? Our roles, like, we've already voted on chair, like some of those things, even that was a little bit different, right? It talked about assistant chair, you know, we have vice chair. So I just thought that's why maybe just rescind it, you know? At this point, we've already kind of done a lot of that work. But I don't know if everyone feels it's creating exposure. I don't know what, what part of it would be more problematic, and retaining it, I think, would be more, so.
Jessica, did you have something? No?
Oh, she's muted.
Yeah, she said she's
Okay.
So I'm, I will take, I will accept a motion if someone would like to make one. And then we can vote, and either it passes or it doesn't.
I will make a motion that we, now I lost the number, shoot. Was it Policy 102? I just closed.
Yep, school committee bylaws.
Okay, that, that we rescind Policy 102, school committee bylaws.
I'll second it for the sake of discussion.
Okay.
I guess my only concern is that for us to, like you said, you know, if we don't have anything in place, where we've already done a lot of what the school committee bylaws say, would it hurt us to keep it in place for two more weeks and just ask Sarah? Rather than just going by the seat of our pants and just deleting it and maybe being exposed.
Well, Sarah's been consulted, and she agrees that it makes sense for us to replace the bylaws with the mask policies. So
So shouldn't that be the vote that we take?
Well, Natasha didn't want to do that until seeing those policies.
We haven't seen the policies, so like, that was my
Didn't we blankly take on all of the mask policies at the beginning and then say that we would tweak any that we needed to?
We took, we took them, we voted on the ones that we didn't have anything that was similar. So these would be something replacing what we have as similar, so like, that would fill the holes. I, I, again, I'm just looking at, when you think about like Similar, so like that would fill the holes, I I again, I'm just looking at, when you think about like duties of the clerk and need equivalent. You know, some of those things, I just would want to. Get some eyes on what they're, what they are, um, I mean, again, or we could just do what Bethland suggested and just remove it. To me, the bigger risk was like the public comment piece, um. Is that we have adopted a policy on, so if we want to amend the motion. Um, to rescind the public comments or public comments portion of. One oh two, I think that would be helpful right now.
Yeah, so we could just rescind article six from policy one oh two.
I'd be more comfortable with that.
Okay, so I will um amend. Motion. Um, to instead. Rescind article six of policy one oh two.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, we will vote by roll call, Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark. Yes.
Oh, she's muted.
She muted, but she's indicating yes. Bethland?
Yes.
And Natasha?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes, okay. Article six of policy one oh two has been rescinded.
Just for procedural sake, I think it would be good to get Jessica on recording saying yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Say it loud and proud.
Yes.
Excellent, there we go.
Just don't anyone to, you know what I'm saying?
Yep, thank you, Jennifer.
Yes, okay. Now, that is it for policy. And now I have to find my agenda. Okay, members' comments. I'm gonna go in alphabetical order, Mary Branley.
Okay, um, I just, um, Brian, I had one question about the Sola Panel project update, do we have anything on that? I think you don't have anything to do. And Brian is muted. Brian's muted.
Brian's muted and maybe delayed, he doesn't.
No, I was muted, I'm not, sometimes it is, but not this time, I will get you an update on that and send it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, um, and then just one more suggestion about the start of school. Um, I was hoping that, and and maybe by um having the students come in gradually, this might offset it, but. Um, it would be really great again for the comfort zone of the parents and the kids when, you know, when we do go back into the classroom. Um, to possibly have like a, an appointment. We open house so that each one of the kids can actually go into the class that they're going to be in so that they and the parent can see. How it's going to work, maybe two or three kids at a time or something like that, I think that'd be another great transition um item, so it's just, you know, food for thought.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Jessica Clark.
All right, um, so just have a few things to mention in regards to reopening. Um, just from talking to different people and just brainstorms. Um, one is, I'm not sure if we have it slotted or not, um, in. The budget um for reopening, but it would be great to have like a runner or a packet delivery person. Um, set aside if we do go remote again, because I know one of the big concerns um was printing of actual worksheets and whatnot when we did in the spring, so I don't know if that's been discussed or thought about. Um, or even repurposing. People who might not have a role in remote, who might want to keep their job doing something along those lines. Um, and then also just to. Again, I've gotten a lot of questions um from community around what can we be doing for PD now in terms of teacher training for literacy, math, tech? Um, safety protocols, all of those those things, if making sure that they remain top priority. And that the teachers' voices are being heard in regards to what what PD they think will be um most beneficial to them for both hybrid and remote. Um, and I'm just looking at my notes here. Um, and we already talked about the updated survey, so I think that's it. Thank you.
Hey, Bethland?
All right, so first off, I just have to say, I know it's got to be really intense right now for everyone, so I'm just very grateful for the work that's going on. Um, I wanted to remind. What who probably already knows this because Colleen is like this, she's just. Her superpowers, knowing these details, but um we just need to change the website with the updated um. Appointments for, yeah. Um, I just wanted to point out a few things in relation to um. School reopening as well. One being that, um, just wondering, teachers that are not comfortable with going back, they are able to choose to go remote. Um, which I don't know that that's been determined, but just I had heard. Conversation about that and just really, teachers are obviously a very important part of the equation as well. Um, and what's going to be happening for them, and there's just so many moving pieces, because then they'll have, if they have school age children, they'll have whatever's going on in their particular district, too. Um, Desi came out with uh their guidelines around what to do if someone is sick. And just to point out, one of the things is if there's everyone in a, in a, in a classroom, if someone in that classroom. Um, this is has COVID, then everyone else in that classroom would be suspected. And and they either have to get testing or quarantine, anyone that is quarantined would be expected to also still be um provided the remote access learning. So again, many different pieces to the picture, and I also wonder what. If all the kids are sitting down in their chairs, what the learning is actually going to have to look like, and if it's actually the kind of social emotional. Um, feed for the children that we, and it's going to be a very different environment when they're back, so. So I don't say, I'm not saying I have the answers, I'm just, it's just a lot of different pieces in the picture. Um, and I and I know that everyone's doing the best they can with it, but um what that environment is going to actually look like. Uh, and then one other thing that I'd um heard about, I wanted to mention is that they've been talking about for those that are. Now, is it a good time to try to start getting kids ready to wear masks, that there are resources like uh guidelines for just ideas, tips for trying to help kids get used to wearing a mask? If they're going to need to be doing that during school. Uh. I think that was it. Thank you.
You're welcome, okay, um, so I have a couple of things. Um. First, thank you, everyone, um, thank you, Jeff, for being here, thank you, Wayne, for being here, thank you, Brian, and um. Thank you, Jen and Brian, for all the work that you've done on this plan, I I can't even imagine. How frustrating and challenging, but also somewhat exciting, because maybe you get to reinvent the wheel a little bit or something, I don't know. Um, but thank you for for doing all that you can do. Um. I uh, I just want to say, my family had a COVID scare, we, for a week, we thought we were positive and. Um, it was very scary, so for the parents that are out there who are really concerned and um are feeling. Very reticent about sending their children back to school, just know that we are all being affected by this and we are all taking your concerns very, very seriously. Um, we did get negative results, so we are okay, um, but uh. Again, this is, it's affecting everybody and you never know who could have it or who doesn't. Um, and there's still too many unknowns, so anyway, that being said, um. Colleen and I are a part of the Student Information System Evaluation Committee, and we have so far had four presentations. We reviewed School Brains, Power School, Aspen X Two, and Infinite Campus. There have been some definite opinions on all four among the committee members. And um, I I have a definite favorite, but I don't think I'm allowed to weigh in yet, so I won't do that. Possibly next week, we will be reviewing Reddicker, but uh Adam needed to do some additional. Inquiry about that, because apparently we already had Reddicker and we. Left them, so he wants to make sure it's even worth our time to review them again, and Colleen, I think you made the point that it wasn't a web-based. Program before, but it is now.
Yes, it was very different before, I used it in Walton when I was there, I used it here in Maynard when I first came to Maynard, it was um. It was very different than what it is today, it's probably fairly comparable. I've heard some good and bad things about it, but same as others.
Yeah, okay. Um. And uh. I attended the Board of Selectmen meeting. Was that, yeah, it was last night, um, they. They adopted or passed, I'm not sure what the correct term is, the Human Relations Committee's proposed policy regarding. The police and and certain. Ways that they will or will not interact with ICE in regards to um the immigrant population in our town. Um, so that was a plus and a bonus in in making the citizens of our town feel a little more secure. Um. They authorized Greg Johnson to approve the contract with Silk Town Roofing for the GM roof replacement. Um, because it has to go, it had to be reviewed by legal and he didn't want to have to wait after the legal review to go back to Board of Selectmen, so they pre-approved it so that as soon as he gets. The okay from legal, he can just start. Um, their bid came in at five hundred sixty seven thousand three hundred and eighty nine dollars, it was the lowest bid and um below the six fifty that. Was approved at town meeting, so we hopefully won't need to use the additional money. Um, but it's there if if we have to, if we run into issues. Um, they also. Approved the authorization of the advanced funds in lieu of borrowing report for the three hundred K. To partially cover replacement of GM roof so that uh, again, the funds are there and the construction can begin as soon as possible. And um. And I think that's it. Natasha, was there anything else of note from the Board of Selectmen meeting, I feel like I'm forgetting something.
Um, I mean, you touched on it, that the, there could be funds that would be the budgeted, and there was some discussion, it sounded like um the articles on how. Uh, because they weren't sure if there was money left, how it could or cannot be used for other purposes, because it was voted on in a very specific way. Um, by the town, the the debt override, so there was discussion on that um a little bit, won't really impact us, but more of a town consideration if it comes in lower. Then um, then what was anticipated, yeah, yeah, I know, I I think it, I mean, like I said, it sounded like that there were full steam ahead, and that's kind of what Brian, you know, mentioned earlier, that. That's why the scenario planning, um, yeah, is something, anyway, yeah, no, I think you did a great job recapping that, thank you.
Thank you, okay, um, so that I am done, we are now going to.
I have members' comments, though.
Oh, oh, my God, I am so sorry, Natasha.
Say the best for last.
So sorry, I meant to go last, I.
That's, oh, I I thought you were going out of order, I was like, well, yeah, Clancy, those are both like before me, so that's where I wasn't, I I didn't want to interrupt your order and how.
No, you should have, it's.
No, okay.
You, go ahead.
Okay, okay, um, so I, for the, Brian, the graduation, I know it sounds like spacing is really. Um, a concern that, you know, the, maybe the school committee won't be able to participate in any capacity like we normally would be able to do, is that right?
Well, my last conversation with the principal, he had, he asked me to invite the chair. Which I've done.
Okay.
So I think there is great concern, correct.
Okay, would we be able, is it going to be live stream possibly, or some way that we, people who are not able to go, that we could. See it happening? Like W A B M, is that?
I will ask, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll go out on a limb and say, I don't think that's part of the plan, because I think it would have been in the communications to families that I've seen, and I haven't seen that.
Okay, I'm just wondering if that might help with some of the alleviate some of the frustration, if they can see it in a different way. Um, you know, through a live stream, it might help, I, you know, obviously, that when it, whatever helps, but if you can, and can, and can, and can't, get it. Um, oh, the website, the Maynard, so I I saw that they have, you have a great place for the remote, the information for a remote. Um. Remote school opening, and I was wondering if we could update with the protocols. Uh, there, they've had such things that have come out just in the past, like two weeks, and I think it would be helpful just to keep that as up to date as possible.
Mm hmm.
For for the community. Um. And, oh, Lydia, this is for you, um, board docs update, did you want to, I know you sent us, there was some discussion.
Oh, um, so, yeah, so Colleen, that basically came about because Colleen, after we did the O M L training on Monday. Uh, they talked about how. If meetings are posted physically on a bulletin board, all meetings for the town have to be posted physically, if. If meetings are posted digitally or virtually on a website, they should all be posted on that same website, so we were a little confused about where we fell into that, because. The Board of Selectmen have all of their stuff posted, but as Colleen clarified with me, um, that because the school committee's um. Agenda is posted on the town website, it doesn't have to be part of board docs, but she decided to go in and play with board docs anyway. And so in order to make uh the materials for the meeting more accessible. To everyone, um, she was just trying to see what it would look like and and. And uh whether or not it was feasible, and so I don't know that it's a done deal, I think it's something that we're still discussing, yeah.
Okay, no, because I I think with all the things that are happening, it'd be great, um, if we, you know, public have access to, I mean, I was pro, you know, we had, we had talked about this before.
Right, yeah.
Um, so if that's a direction, I would be eager to do that unless there was some hindrance.
Yeah, no, I'm meeting with Colleen tomorrow, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it and talk about what it will entail. And Colleen, did you want to say something?
Yeah, and this week I actually did post differently, if you were to look at the agenda on the website, it actually has all the meeting documents.
Yes, and thank you so much for that, that was awesome.
Awesome, um, and then um, the open meeting law discussions, you had mentioned, are you able to get maybe circle to send like a recap of some of the highlights from your?
Yeah, actually, uh.
Just to the.
Slideshow, didn't we, did we, or my, yes, we received a slideshow, I can forward that. That there, basically, the the two things that we got tripped up on were the posting of making sure everything, all town meetings were posted in the same place. And the fact that the way we had been doing the edits of the school committee minutes wasn't exactly okay. Um, so we needed to be doing the edits in real time during the meeting and so that people could see us saying, rather than us. Feeding her our edits and then having her incorporate them. So, so just to make it more transparent and more above board, and those.
Yeah.
But I will forward, I will forward um. The slideshow.
Yeah, I know, thank you, that would, that's, I think anything we can always get a refresher on would be great, it sounds like it wasn't anything super. Um, crazy, but um, the posting of the agenda, I I, and this is irrelevant to COVID, but I remember at one point, when I went through my training last year. There was something about if if you wanted to do remote. Um, it had to be something that the town has to vote on at the town level, like for the whole. And it was a little bit more of an in-depth process, that it wasn't just about posting it on the website, it had to be an approved.
Right, and that's the thing, is because the town has approved it and they do post all of their stuff on their website, no, you're absolutely correct.
I think it's more than that, I think you have to send something to the state, like that you posted a certain way, that's how I, I don't know, I could be wrong in how I remember that.
Right, so I, yeah, Colleen, go ahead.
Board of Selectmen in normal times have to actually um vote it in. Because it's ever been done, not even to this point. Um, because of the governor's order, everyone's allowed to do it remote, so that supersedes that. And as far as posting, I don't even know if they've actually voted to, under normal circumstances, post electronically. I know everything is put on the actual bulletin board in town hall. So I can definitely get clarification from Michelle on, um, Michelle Jenkins, to see what is under normal circumstances. What is the root of?
I just wanted to make sure we were doing what we needed to be doing and we are. Either, either way, we're doing what we need to be doing. So.
Well, no, because my, my, my thought was that, I mean, I think we, it's been great to have the electronic and if, you know, whenever this executive order gets rescinded or is no longer, it seems like an efficient way to operate and maybe that we would, you know, see how we could explore that with the town at some point. And then just the, the IEP, you're talking about the committee that you guys are on for looking at different systems. And I'm just wanted to advocate a little bit more because this comes up and I tried to at last year.
It's the first question I ask of every single one. Can parents access the IEP? Can teachers access the IEP? Is it visible? Are you able to? So, yeah, so IEP and ELL are the two things that I have been asking every single company about.
Yeah. I know, um, Acton, Foxborough, they use the Power School, which was, which I think had that. That's where, when you said it, it just reminded me because that was one that we were looking like, hey, that looked pretty cool. So and then just, thank you.
One that I actually really hated and I think it's
Okay.
punitive and racist actually, but I didn't say that out loud on the record. Yes, I did. Anyway, yes, go ahead.
Okay. So on that note, I was going to thank Brian and team for their collective hard work ongoing, because I know it doesn't stop just because we got a draft. But in, in, in gathering feedback and really trying to engage all the stakeholders. And also to, to Justin and people at the town level for participating in the ad hoc safety committee because it's not just the schools. We have stakeholders all around and and so I just appreciate all those efforts and I mean, to be honest, I, I feel like no matter what, I feel like a little bit of a failure at some point, you know, it's hard, these things because it's, it just, every, every child has individual needs, every family has individual needs and and so I just appreciate the public's really sharing their feedback with us and understanding that we're just doing the best we can in processing and asking questions. And we'll get through this together as a community by just hanging there. And again, just a really thankful, thankfulness for the, the efforts. And at some point, hearing about Excel, I think, would be helpful too, because I know that's a component that I know Lois, I see her little Lois there. I know she's participating on the, the ad hoc safety committee as well, which is great. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We are now moving into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel regarding the Director of Building Operations and MOU and will not return to open session. And we will adjourn via roll call. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Bethland Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
And Lydia Clancy. Yes. All right. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Wayne. Oh, I think Wayne might have left already. Thank you for being with us here tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Are we going to get beamed up? Is Colleen going to beam us up?
Getting beamed up.
Or are we, what, what is, or is she thinking that way?
She's talking and she's muted.
Or she's going to boot everybody out. I wasn't sure if I should get, you know.
I'm going to, those who don't exit themselves, I will remove from the meeting and.
Okay, good.
And is Jennifer going to join us?
I hope so. Yeah.
Brian?
Yeah.
Yep, Brian.
I'm here.
I, I figured Brian was a given. Should I not make that assumption?
I'm here.